Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would call the regular City Council meeting of November 27, 2018, to order. This evening, we have one gentleman registered for the open forum, Larry Johnson. Larry, can you step up to the dais, please, and sign in and give us your address and then just repeat it on the mics, please? You have approximately three minutes. It's, you know, you have approximately three minutes. I'm not going to hold you tight to a schedule, all right?
Oh, good evening, Council. I'm just, I was, this is a small incident. I was stopped by one of your officers. Not necessarily just stopped. Usually, if you do something wrong, you get stopped by the police. They give you a ticket or let you go. What happened is he followed me and followed me and followed me. I'm watching, I'm thinking, what he's gonna, what's gonna happen? So I get to the diner and I swerve over and stop, and then he gets out and writes me a citation for not using a signal. And I just, I'm just curious if all your officers do that? And I'm curious why, why he's not better trained? Why, if a person does something wrong, pull them over, stop, give them a citation, let them go? But I'm not going to have people follow me around. I'm far too educated and have enough going for me. I don't need people following me around. And they're not going to follow me around, because if they follow me around, I'm going to stop. Dead. And I'm just curious why that happened. That's all I, all I have to do. This isn't Nazi Germany. My pigs and me driving around shouldn't be followed around cities, especially into another city and then stop. That's all I have. I'm just curious. I'm going to file a complaint here, and I'm probably going to go to the state or the ACLU and see if they can do anything about it, because I think that's, that's, it's wrong, it's wrong conduct, and it's counterproductive. If they have that much time on their hands, disband them, privatize them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just for the record, I spoke to you a little bit earlier. You'd called my, my number at home and left a message. Tried to call you back. We weren't able to connect. Perhaps I would have been able to have set up a meeting with Chief Henthorne or something, so I apologize for not getting back to you, but I appreciate you being here this evening.
Okay, well, excuse me. They have come from the citizen and law enforcement. My conduct is...
All right. Thank you. That was the only open forum, so if you'd all rise and do the pledge of allegiance with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
At this time, I would move the approval of the minutes of the special concurrent City Council Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Planning Commission work session of November 13, 2018, the regular City Council meeting of November 13, 2018, the special City Council work session of November 16, 2018, and the special City Council meeting of November 17, 2018.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. At this time, if, I don't know, Mr. DeVitch is not used to being at the dais. I'm going to go over and read a proclamation from the city of Richfield to Mr. DeVitch, and then we'll, we'll all have comments. Some good, some bad, nothing neutral.[213.23][213.23](Laughter).
Use the microphone.
I can speak over. Proclamation of the city of Richfield. Whereas Stephen L. DeVitch began work with the city of Richfield on May 19, 1980, and has served the council, our residents, and businesses for over 38 years. And whereas Steve has made lasting contribution to the city of Richfield, serving as a trusted colleague and mentor to his coworkers, a tireless advocate for the community, and a faithful steward of our citizens' tax dollars throughout his career. And whereas Steve has worked faithfully in each and every aspect of the city administration department, as his role with the city involved from human resources manager to administrative services director to city manager. And whereas Steve has been an extraordinarily professional, diligent, loyal, and committed employee with high integrity and a genuine desire to make Richfield a vibrant, healthy, inclusive community. And whereas during his time at the city of Richfield, Steve served nine years on the Public Employee Retirement Association Board, including acting in the role of president, ensuring the stability of all public employees' retirement pensions. And whereas Steve has demonstrated exemplary pride and accomplishment in every phase of his work, including his vision and leadership for the entire organization, the establishment and support of an innovative, resident-focused staff, and sound financial planning and foresight that has positioned the city. And whereas, on behalf of the citizens and employees of the city of Richfield, the city wishes to recognize and thank Steve DeVitch for his tireless and devoted service to the community. Now, therefore, I, Pat Elliott, Mayor of the city of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, hereby join the staff and residents of Richfield in expressing appreciation to Steve DeVitch for his loyal and dedicated service and extend best wishes upon his retirement and for continued success and enjoyment in life pursuits. Proclaimed this 27th day of November, 2018. You know, it's, you read proclamations and you're sincere in, in your feelings and what you want to say. The, the words in the proclamation are written formally, and the only thing I can say, everything it talks about in here about his devotion, the breadth of experience, his, his absolute support of everything related to Richfield, his ability to seek out and find without question, I think, everybody in the room, and particularly the city council, recognizing that a leader, the best thing about a leader is he knows how to pick his staff. And, and I can say, you know, I, I've been in Richfield for a long time. In the last 12 years I've been here, I came in with a fair amount of cynicism. I didn't approach Mr. Rogge, but, but there, there were doubts, there were questions, like many people on the outside looking in. I questioned the motivations, sometimes the direction, sometimes the recommendations, and, and all things related to the staff. And it's because you don't understand the workings, you don't understand their jobs. When I got elected and had the opportunity to meet Steve, and more importantly, the opportunity, like I said, the best leaders are best known for the team they put together. And in the 12 years I've been here, you are an exemplary leader and, and are smart enough, give credit, and, and free rein to a certain degree. You bring the hammer down occasionally, but, but, but free rein to let your staff do their work and, and work and cooperate and collaborate with city council. And we end up here today, best verb in the metropolitan area. And, and credit, credit and kudos to you. You're the one that put the team together, you're the one that led it. But overall, it's, it's, the city council benefits from everything that's done for them, from, from you down to the staff. And I think that much more than, than the mayors that, that, that will, you know, succeed me and preceded me and the council members and everything else, we, we have what is seen as the, the pretty job. We get to make the decisions and get the credit. And I can only speak for myself, the credit goes entirely to you and the staff you put together that has made this the number-one city in the metropolitan area. Truly appreciate the service. And I hope that, that you find a lot of happiness in the future and keep yourself busy, because I know you're going to really congratulate.
Thank you, Ben.[513.54][513.54](Applause).
I think, I think it may be best, I don't know, I, Councilmember Garcia has a few words, and, and...
Yeah, I was kind of afraid of that.
Long-standing relationship.
Yeah.
And, and this is kind of one of those times when leaders have to kind of grin.
Yeah.
Edwina, would you like to come up?
Sure.
See, that's what happens when you know somebody for about 35 years, they get all kinds of dirt on you that you just can't...
More importantly, they're not afraid to use it.
And they're not afraid to use it.
Exactly.
Well, especially Edwina.[549.32][549.32](Laughter). Thank you so much.
There you go. Thank, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, my God. It's right here. Be sure to peek into the mic.
Smartass. Okay, as you know, I've got many talents. And I am a literary giant.[581.16][581.16](Laughter). And it, and I did write this because it's a, it's a sad day for us. It might be happy for you, but I doubt it, you know? I mean, you know, leave a cushy job for what we're, you know, going to Lonmoine? Forget it. Anyway, this poem is, "In the beginning was a village named Richfield, who grew up, who grew up to be an urban hometown. A boy named Stevie DeVitch was hired in 1984. And so was the start of the lore. Stevie learned to cipher, the budget being very easy for him. He perspired, he toiled, and he grew up before our very eyes. In spite of himself, he learned the workings of the town. He knowed about city clerking, he knowed about personnel rules, and he knowed how to make hisself dispensable. Yet he stayed on. He became assistant city manager. He growed to love power."
Yeah.
Yeah. And his staffers kind of liked him. Steve married beyond his station, and soon a son, Jeff, was born, and he's waiting to live happily ever after. What he has done with the city is to make it economically feeble, I mean feasible, feasible. He has guided his staff to make himself look good. Right?
Oh, yeah.
He has built our city by growing to be, by growing it to be strong financially, good development, housing parks, recreation, infrastructure, and on and on. But most important, Steve, most important, you have grown on us, and we sincerely say a heartfelt thanks. Steve, we will miss you, and we wish you Godspeed. (Applause). And have a few little tokens here.
Nothing I'm going to get arrested for having, right?
Not immediately.
Not immediately, no. Yeah.
Don't look in here. You know, let me tell you first, I got this little story about Steve and, you know, it's been difficult for him to say, hey, it's, it's time for us to, you know, to part. And one day was what about, Jared said something like, three weeks ago, this is, Jared's the one that told me this story, about three weeks ago, Steve was in his office and he said, oh, hell, he said, "I've had it, I'm tired, I'm exhausted, I just, I just gotta leave." So he got in his car and, as he was driving away, then he thought, uh-huh. He, he said, "I'll stop at the local watering hole." And so he did. And he walks in at 2:00 in the afternoon, no one was there, just a bartender. So he orders a beer and then goes to the end of the bar. And here comes the beer, he takes a swig of his beer, and then he hears a little voice that said, "Gee, mister, I love your eyes." And Steve can't figure out what's going on. And then he said, "Oh," he said, "I, I am just really tired." And then he takes another swig of his beer, and then he hears another voice that said, "Gee, mister, what a beautiful tie." And Steve says, "Bar tender, barkeep, what's going on here?" He said, "You know, somebody's been really saying nice things to me. What's going on?" The bartender said, "Oh, don't worry about it, mister, it's the peanuts, they're complimentary." Is that the way you told me, Jared? Anyway, so, I was at the bookstore, and, and I, and I found this wonderful book, and I got it for you, "Stuff Happens, So Get Over It." Yeah, I did put a little sticker on there.
Yeah, sure.
Beautiful. And then, you know, I know you'll probably want to, you know, enjoy watching basketball, football, whatever. So in, you know, you should probably have something to toss around when you're watching football. I got you this nice football.
Ooh. Very...
Yeah. And then I'm thinking, well, while you're watching football, what are you going to eat? What perchance is there going to be to eat? And knowing what a sweet, sweet tooth you have, I wonder if you remember these.
Yeah.
Those, those are from the 50s.
No, I don't remember these.[951.64][951.64](Laughter).
Those are kits. I don't know if you guys, well, somebody's got to remember them, kits.
I don't think there's anyone else that... Oh, sorry, Ben. Um, possibly...
Junior's Dairy Store, 66th and Penn. Red Hot Dollars, two for a penny.
And then the staff was, you know, the staff really has gotten to where they really kind of like you quite a bit. They eat, but they've gotten used to you, that's why.
Yeah, that's right.
So, on behalf of the staff, they asked for me to, you know, when you, when you think of them and you get lonesome and, and, you know, and you wish you had an item to discuss that was not on the agenda, you know? Anyway, so, they thought that you should have this for when you're lonesome for them. A little bear that says, "We love you, Steve."
Oh.
Now, oh, you can have this back, too.
Yeah, thank you, my dear. The hollow whale, my goodies.
Now, this, um, this beautiful box.
Yeah.
You see how beautiful it is?
It looks heavy, too.
Mm-hmm. It is very heavy. Now, this box will serve, right now, it's got coins, got coins in here.
Really?
Mm-hmm. And so, you know, and that's nice, that's what you want to have if you can. But if you don't have enough coins, which I think it's, you know, move them from under the, under the mattress into the box.
Into the box, yeah.
Yes.
I've done that before.
Anyway, so, this box contains coins, but you can also use it for memories, good memories, memories of the city people here, the constituents you've worked with, all the residents, all the staff folks, everyone. I mean, you're going to have a great time filling this with memories, right?
Yeah, sure.
And then when you're done with it and you have no other use for it, it also comes in handy for a yearn.
You know, when you first, look, when you first put that up here, that's what I thought you were doing. It was going to be an urn for me.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, my gifts are long-lasting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I know how your mind works, too.
There's a roll of coins for you. Don't listen. Can't read. He's old.
Can't read. I'm old, I can't read anymore.
Well, that's okay. You can read it later.
Okay.
But don't, don't let anybody cheat you, you know?
Right.
So...
Awesome.
Anyway, so, and I'm sure that there's some other goodies coming your way later at another different party. But, and I want to turn this over now to the mayor-elect, and she's got a little gift for you, so, you know, and I don't know how to say this, Steve, but, you know, for the longest time, you know, I, I, I don't know, you're, you're just fun to talk to. You're, you know, we share jokes and we know people and, you know, and we've just developed a friendship, and it means a lot to me.
Means a lot to me.
And I want you to know that I'm going to be missing you when you're not up there, and I'll be thinking of you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, honey.[1186.16][1186.16](Applause).
Hi, Steve. This will be a lot less, a less pain, not as painful as, as going through the comedy skit with Edwina, but we heard that this is the wine that you like, and we thought that we could give you a little token of appreciation for your family and to celebrate when you get home. And I just want to also say thank you very much for, you know, I've been on the council for a short time in comparison to the amount of years that you and Edwina have known each other, or even Pat. And I just appreciate your, your always open and willingness to sit down with me and explain things in detail and do so in a way that really resonates with me, and how many times we went over the budget and the tax, you know, are really understanding the pretty taxes, making sure that going line by line together was very crucial. So I just want to say thank you for, for always being willing to have an open door and sit down with me and just go through everything and answer every single question that I have, and really being supportive to myself and the council. So we wish you a beautiful retirement and a lot of great time with your family and rest and relaxation, and we will miss you a lot, Steve.
Thank you, please.
The only question I have is, where did you find a bottle of Ripple? I didn't even think they made that stuff.[1299.44][1299.44](Laughter).
You know, I, I did speak to Bill Fillmore.
Yeah.
And he's the one that told me, and he said, you know, I hope I'm not speaking out of school, but he says, you know, "We all know Steve is cheap."
Oh, yeah.
He said, but, he said, "This is the kind of wine he likes." So, you know, it, I just took all my change and, you know, and got it.
Buck fifty-nine in the day? Ripple and Boone's Farm about the same, I can...
Abs, yeah, Boone's Farm Easy Nights. I mean, come on.
So that's one from the council.
After the third bottle, nothing matters anymore.[1343.72][1343.72](Laughter).
If you do Wild Irish Rose, it's one and a half bottles.
Oh, okay.
It's wine masquerading as alcohol.
Yeah.
Your turn.
Thank you. Well, you know, first of all, I thank you, one and all, as a city council, for fostering the relationship that you have with this city, with, with this staff. The reason that we, I believe, as a community, have been so successful, especially these last few years, is the close working relationship that we have between the city council and, and staff. And we're all on the same page, and, you know, and we get things done, and it's really a very, very, very fine way to operate. You know, me personally, as you well know, this is a job that I wasn't very anxious to leave. I love being here. I can't be here forever. I mean, I know there has to be an end to everything, a beginning and an end to everything. But you get so many years invested in a place, and, I don't know, you just become a part of it, and, you know, it's what I've said to city council a number of times, is that what we do, it's kind of like a relay race, and, you know, you're sitting in those chairs for a while, and, and our staff are sitting in chairs, and, and we're, we're all looking to get to the finish line. We know what that is, but you got to pass the baton to the next person, and you got to keep that moving along to get there. And, and we've been able to do that, and I, I'm sure that Richfield will be able to do that in the future. But I've been extraordinarily lucky to work for the city of Richfield. This has been a great place to work. I've had great city councils to work with. I've had great staff to work with. And Mayor, you're exactly right. If there is one secret to being successful in anything, is making sure that you, that you pick people around you who are very competent, and then, you know, treat them with respect and give them the opportunity to grow. And, you know, it's rewarded 100 times back to you, because, you know, they're looking to make you be successful, and so you, you pretty much hit it on the head. If there's one secret to being in a position like this, that's, that's what it is. The other thing is, I would have to say that some of the finest people that I have ever known in my life are people that I have met through my association with the city of Richfield, people that have been on the city council, people that I have worked with, people in the community that I've come to know and are friends with. And it's kind of interesting, just, just yesterday afternoon, a person in the community that I've known for a long time called me up with a, with a matter in her neighborhood that she wanted to deal with, and she said, "Oh, Steve, I'm just calling you one more time." She said, "I know you're going to be gone in a couple of days, but I wanted to get this over here, because I know you'll take care of it before you go." So, and I did.[1537.04][1537.04](Laughter). You know, that's the kind of thing that's so gratifying. And, you know, again, I'll make a couple of quick comments, a city manager report at the end, I don't want to prolong this right now, but I just, I've been so lucky to, to have this job. And, you know, the one thing I'll say ahead of time, with the way that I'm invested in this community, I'm sure I've annoyed you folks at one time or another, because I come across sometimes very passionate and very, I don't know, eh, I don't know what the word I want to use is, maybe, maybe, maybe almost borderline obnoxious sometimes, but...
Feisty? Feisty, is that...
Feisty, yes, feisty. And I apologize for any time I've done that, but, you know, it, it just all comes from the passion that I have. It just kind of like bubbles up inside of me. It's like, you know, this is, this is my, this is so, you know, that's what it's all about. But you're, you're wonderful people to work for. I couldn't have asked for anything, anything better, and wonderful people that I've worked with and, and a wonderful community, it's hard to leave. Thank you.
No, no. Well, you could, because nobody would want to share it.[1635.12][1635.12](Laughter).
As far as I know, I've got pardon power in the city, so you do what you feel is right, okay? And I can also serve as a designated driver if that becomes necessary.
Well, I can.
All right? Any other comments?
Hey, there, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to spill a couple of things that I, I was going to say in a couple of days here, but you leave such an incredible legacy, Steve. It's, it's tremendous, and there, there are a couple, a couple of things that, that are, I think, the obvious fruit and continuing fruit of, of your work here that are part of your legacy. And one of the privileges we have as council members is to get out into the neighborhood and knock on people's doors and hear what they think. And I always like to give people an opportunity to tell me what's wrong with the city, and sometimes people do avail themselves of that opportunity from time to, but overwhelmingly, when I ask for what's wrong, there's a non sequitur that people respond with. It's like, well, what can we be doing better? And their response is, "I love Richfield." Or it's like, oh, maybe you didn't understand. No, they understood the question, but their heart response when, when thinking about the city is not whatever momentary thing might not be right, but the heart response is, "I love Richfield." That didn't happen by accident. It happened with a lot of hard work and a lot of diligence from you, from obviously the staff, too, but from your leadership, and that, that's part of your legacy. And, and the other, the other huge tremendous part of your legacy, and other people have mentioned it, is, is our, is our staff. And what I've learned from you and what I've learned from our staff is only dwarfed by what I haven't yet learned from you, and what I haven't yet learned from our staff. And you're, you're leaving, in addition to just meeting with staff one-on-one, you know, from occasion, every year I get to meet with all, all the, all our directors, and not one word about you, about each other, to cut anybody down, that's not by accident. That's, that's, that's a legacy, Mr. DeVitch, that anybody could be proud of, but I hope you, you leave feeling incredibly proud. I'm certainly incredibly grateful.
Thank you, councilmember.
And I won't prolong this too much longer, but just to say thank you, Steve, for all the council, all the calls, and you mentioned that passion, that, that feistiness... And you mentioned that passion, that feistiness, if you will, and that's just one of the things that I've always just so appreciated, just the investment that you have in Richfield that emanates out of you. And I'll always remember just the trip we took just kind of through the city this year, just kind of looking, kind of the trip down both memory lane and where we're going and kind of just seeing the glow in your face, just talking about Richfield and in particular about, with an emphasis on the where we're going. I think that's what was always so inspiring to you about what we can become. And I just, there's so many measures of success, but I think one is, you know, did you leave a place better than you found it? And I hope when you walk out of the city hall chambers today, you can be so proud of what you've accomplished. And it's just such a job, well done, Steve, and congratulations.
Thank you, Michael. Moving on to the agenda, its next item is presentation of the report from the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board, Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, I think we'll turn it over to President Gordon Vasecki.
I hope that what I lack in the oratory originality that I'm following, I can make up with using brevity. So, "As an inner-ring suburb bordered by an international airport, America's largest indoor shopping mall and the convergence of two interstate corridors, we're uniquely positioned to entice travelers from all corners of the globe to stay, visit, play, and dine in Richfield. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Gordon Vasecki, President of the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board. My family and I have lived in Richfield since 2000 and during that time I've been an active community cheerleader and volunteer. I've served for six years on the Community Services Commission, nine years on the Planning Commission, and over 10 years on the Board of Directors of the Richfield Chamber of Commerce. Professionally, I'm an attorney for Best Buy Corporation and my employer's flexibility and my five-minute commute offer me the opportunity to invest time in this community. I'm here tonight to give an update on the great work the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board is doing in Richfield and I greatly appreciate you accommodating this report. I know it's report season for all your other committees and the tourism board does not traditionally provide and hasn't typically provided a report to council. With the departure of City Manager Devich, that will probably change in the future. The Richfield Tourism Board is Richfield's Convention and Visitors Bureau. CVBs are commonplace in Minnesota where they're statutorily authorized and funded by lodging fees. The 494 corridor running from Highway 100 to the Mississippi River has one of the highest hotel densities of anywhere in the country and competition for occupancy is fierce. Richfield is home to only four hotel properties and getting our locations noticed is a significant challenge. Since 1990, the RTPB has embraced this challenge, promoting Richfield under an operating agreement with the city. That agreement requires that the RTPB furnish the city with marketing promotional services that promote the city as a tourist and convention center. Year-to-date, 64% of our expenses have been for administration and broad community promotion. 30% have been hotel-directed promotional activity and 6% of this year's spend has gone toward Richfield icons like the Red, White &amp; Blue Days, the Richfield Historical Society, and the Urban Wildlands Half Marathon. The keystone in our broad community outreach and promotion is a robust, multi-channel online presence. You can find us at visitrichfield.com or on Facebook by searching Visit Richfield. This fall, you've probably seen some of our work, the Visit Richfield newspaper and billboard advertisements, the radio promotions, it was all part of a broad best-bur promotion and some of the ideas for that came from council and came from this room. The RTPB is a 501(c)(4) nonprofit corporation run by a four, five-member volunteer board and a part-time paid executive director. Katie Epler is our executive director. Katie joined the RTPB in August. She's a Richfield resident with extensive experience in the tourism and promotion industry and she's been instrumental in helping sharpen our strategic vision and advance our goals and objectives. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge retiring city manager Steve Devich, who since 1990 has provided invaluable assistance to the RTPB, being the steady hand on the rudder, the thread of consistency that followed the RTPB since its inception. And I really hope that Steve gets some time on his boat. He will be missed on the tourism board. So with all of this good stuff, I do have four asks of council and I hope that you'll help us out. The first, I hope that you'll agree that the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board has actively held up its end of the agreement with the city and promoted all of Richfield, including our hospitality suites, or hospitality properties. And I'd ask that at the next meeting, the 11th of December, you'll see a consent agenda item for the renewal of the terms of three of the hotel representatives who would be expiring. The second is, we do spend most of our budget promoting the broader Richfield, not just exclusively the hotel properties. My ask is that the city council partner with the Tourism Bureau to update our nearly 30-year-old agreement to more accurately reflect the work we're doing in the community. It's, the agreement is very hotel-focused and very hospitality-focused, but our work hasn't been hotel and hospitality-focused. The third ask is, we do have a seat on our board that one of the hotel properties in the community has declined to use. That seat has been open. I think it's appropriate that we actually look for new voices on the board and my ask of city council is that you guys undertake an effort to help find us or to find us a board member whose experiences and community contacts would make them a good fit for promoting the city of Richfield. And then fourth and finally, with the loss of our longtime community liaison, I think it would be appropriate either if council or council together with staff find one among you or one of staff to be the liaison to the Tourism Bureau. We do meet during the day on Tuesdays, usually the first Tuesday of the month, so I would welcome a fresh city liaison. The existence of a Convention and Visitors Bureau like the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board and the close partnership with the city of Richfield is critical, not only in supporting our hospitality industry, but in everything our great community has to offer. I sincerely hope that we have your full support as we work to tell people what all of us in the room already know, and that's that Richfield is the best place in the world to stay, visit, play, and dine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was great that we had the opportunity to meet last week and just get to know you a little bit, a little bit better. And I just want to say very publicly, I'm very grateful. This isn't, this isn't the only role you've served in Richfield. You've been on other commissions and committees and your pay is not commensurate with your labors.
I heard I was getting doubled.
Double, triple, yes, yes. Name your multiple.
Excellent.
Yes. But, so I just wanted to say, to say thank you for serving publicly in a number of roles, but specifically in casting vision and even casting new vision for this, for the tourism board. And specifically, I appreciate what I think is a common cause to, to what you've already begun in rebalancing the focus, not just to, not to exclude hotels, but to include other endeavors. And I appreciate the invitation to the council and the opportunity to clarify the mission and vision of the organization with our, with our contract and agreement with the city. So I just want to say thank you for your service and we love Richfield and we love that people outside of Richfield are becoming, are falling in love in greater and greater numbers with Richfield too. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that, you know, the Richfield Tourism Board is to be applauded for investing in our community, keeping us in the forefront of what's going on so people can see it. And that means a lot because it's, from after our conversation, I think I certainly understood it a hell of a lot, I mean, a lot better than, than I, than I had before. And so I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Next item on the agenda is the annual meeting with the Civil Service Commission. We have Acting Chair Mary Stratton here this evening. She's actually the 2019 actual chair. So Mary, if you'd like to come up and speak with us.
I'm here to present the Civil Service Commission Annual Presentation to share with the city council and the residents of Richfield the accomplishments that the Civil Service Commission has done this year. So far, we've had three meetings this year and we have one coming up. On February 5th, an annual meeting was called per state statute and officers were appointed. Steven Hervich was president and chair, myself, Mary Stratton was vice president, and Lisa Eder was secretary. At that time, the Fire Lieutenant Eligibility roster was read aloud and approved by all the commissioners. On February 26th, unfortunately, a meeting was called because of an auditing process error in scoring matrices regarding the lieutenant eligibility roster. Because the fire department was transparent as the city manager and with us, an outside auditing firm was hired, calculations were made to ensure that there were no other errors in this process. A new fire lieutenant promotional roster was approved with sincere apologies by not only the chief, but by the commission for this error. On October 16th, the commission approved the fire captain promotional process and we've just been waiting and I've just heard from the chief that on December 18th, we will certify the process. And on a personal note, I would like to thank Steve Hervich, who has been our president, for his leadership and passion over the past eight years. And I look forward to working with Mayor-elect Gonzalez and thank you Mayor Elliott for all the work we've done together. And I especially want to thank the fire department and public safety. I was talking with the chief and I live in a large condominium and I'm the board president and there's 157 units. And in the last year, that department has made over 120 calls, whether they be for health reasons or smoke damage or some other things. They have always been professional, they've been on time, and they care about the people in our building. Chief actually came over to one of our seminars. It was the highest-attended seminar with the most questions and it was really helpful. So it helps me as a liaison and as a civil service commissioner to have such a great department to work with and I look forward to the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I was contacted by Steve Hervich, the Chair of the Civil Service Commission, and asked to make a statement on his behalf in regards to some of the activities between the board and the council that took place over the course of the last 12 to 18 months. There's a, there was a concern that's been expressed within the city and everything to create additional diversity within our staff, our public safety officers, fire department tried to make our service personnel, the staff here and everything more representative of the community, at least in terms of diversity. And a couple impediments stood in our way in trying to accomplish those goals, particularly in regards to the public safety department. The Civil Service Commission was set up to protect the civil service people that work with the public safety and it was set up eons ago before a lot of the statutory authorities, including unions and everything, were in a position to protect their jobs, their welfare, their incomes, and their retirement. So the civil service was to act as kind of a check on cities in making sure that the public safety employees were protected and treated fairly. Over the course of the years, a number of different federal and state statutes and also union representation has eliminated a lot of the safeguards that were duly provided by both the Civil Service Commission and the various organizations and unions. The format of it, once again, puts some checks and balances on the city and their ability to hire and train public safety officers. We had a couple study sessions trying to figure out what we as a council could do to open some of the pathways to becoming public safety officers, particularly for the city of Richfield. In order to do that, we actually secured services of a professional in regards to civil service and public safety and recommendation was made to not disband the Civil Service Commission, but take away their authority to run the interviews and rate the rankings and everything and some of their duties that were particular to public safety. Our chief actually was one of the innovators that started a program to create alternative paths to becoming employed in public safety. Individuals that didn't develop an interest till later in life and perhaps had a degree in something unrelated to public safety would have to start over at square one to qualify or become qualified to take the post-training and actually take the public safety tests and everything. So the recommendation was made to the city council to remove the supervisory capacity of the Civil Service Commission, remove public safety from that so that some of these innovative ways of bringing people in that aspire to be public safety officers and, but don't have the time or the revenue to go back and start the education process all over. So at a city council meeting, we took public safety, removed it from that and opened some doors for our chief and staff in the city to be able to create additional diversity in our public safety that would more closely represent the community they're serving. Steve complained about this and it was directed to me. I wasn't the mayor at the time, but as a friend, I got the direct blow. But basically saying that the Civil Service Commission basically felt that it was demeaning to them and taking it away. And it wasn't so much that they may not have agreed with it, but the lack of communication between the city council and the members of the Civil Service Commission. He felt kind of abused their authority and created tension between the commission and us for a period of time. So it, I just, Steve asked me to pass that on and he just felt that it was a disservice to the people that volunteer and work. On that particular commission, I'm assuming that there may be members of other commissions that feel that the communication between the council and their chair and their individual members sometimes is lacking or sometimes their opinions and feelings of how much they enjoy serving the community by serving on commissions. And if that's the case and if anybody else feels similar to Steve, I would just suggest that it's not for a lack of being concerned or appreciating what they're doing for the city, but sometimes we get caught up in other concerns. So if, whether it's Steve or anybody on any commission that is a volunteer and serves for the, serves for the benefit of the city, ever has any feelings of lack of, attention's a terrible word, but lack of paying attention to their feelings and what they're trying to do and communicating. We all have liaisons, some, as always, we'll do it a little bit better, but I don't want anybody else walking away from a commission feeling that we've done a disservice to them. So feel free to call me as long as I'm still here, Mayor-elect Maria, or anybody else because I think if there's a concern out there of their being neglect or disregard of what they're doing, I can guarantee you, nobody up here feels that way and all you need to do is talk to us and we can assure you that whatever is the problem, we will address it. So, thank you. Hats off to hometown hits, we'll jump to the high notes. And I think I'm going to let Councilmember Garcia start off because we're all exhausted and she can run through pretty much the entire list for us, so.
Well, I was busy writing a poem this afternoon, so I didn't really get to, you know. know, search for other things. So, but, you know, I just, it's been a tough month, you know, and, you know, and I, and I just want to wish folks, you know, appreciate, you know, all the beautiful trees decorations, and all over the city, they're starting to spring up. And I was hoping that maybe Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez would invite the STEM School Choir to sing for us during the Christmas season, because, you know, they come once a year, and I think we should take advantage of enjoying their music more than once a year. So, and I don't know what else to say, except, that's it.
Councilmember Troutman.
I was gonna, I'll keep my comments brief, and part of my hats off were to Steve, so I will spare you the embarrassment of repeating that again, but hats off and a lot of thanks to you. I also wanted to just take my hats off to all our staff, but especially to Jared. As we've gone through the management selection process, we had about 14 hours of interviews in 24 hours. It was a lot, a lot of work, and he put in a lion's share of it, even coming before and staying after. So, I wanted to say thank you, especially to you and to all our staffs.
Councilmember Howard.
I don't have much. Speaking of the holiday season, just if folks are looking for a place to get your Christmas tree, heading over to Veterans Park is a good place to go. We got ours this weekend, and just barely fitted in under, actually, there's not really room for a star on top, but it's not a full Griswold move. We didn't take out a window or anything. But they do a great job, and if you've got kiddos, Santa's around handing out candy canes, so it's a fun place to be during the holiday season, and that's about it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
I just have a couple items with the holidays coming up. Village Shores has their holiday open house and tour of their trees that they have decorated, and that's gonna happen on December 2nd, so this Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00. There'll be Santa Claus, tree tours, treats, and holiday music. And there will also be the final event for Justice for Jonathan O'Shaughnessy on Saturday, the 8th, and it's a Red Cross Blood Drive at 673 Nicolette. And that's also happening, that will be happening Saturday, the 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And lastly, we'll get another reminder, and at the next Council meeting, but the city has a Commission recruitment process, and that will be opening up December 1st, and will stay open till the end of the month. So, join, you know, consider joining a Board and Commission for the city of Richfield. There's a couple youth spots open, and mostly right now, we have adult spots open, but if you go on our website, you'll get to see the vacancies that we have, and it's just a great opportunity to get to know your neighbors, to get to know the ins and outs of the city, and also have real influence and impact in improving the quality of life here in Richfield.
Thank you. You know, I was just thinking, as we were talking, I think the item four on the agenda is always, you know, or most always, hats off to hometown hits, and I can't think of a better way to end 38 years and take my hats off to Steve. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. With an addendum, I hadn't even thought about this. I just, I sit up here ruminating sometimes, and weird thoughts come to mind, but I'm thinking Marty probably needs a companion on his bench, and I'm gonna see what I can do about putting Mr. DeBitch right there. With your approval, Marty. Oh, I'm not getting a nod of the head from him, sir. You got room on your bench for him?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. All right, so I'll be working on that. So, you're gonna have swing by every once in a while. I'm not sure how I'm gonna address you, but it's gonna be interesting, so. All right. At that, I would move on to requesting a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Now, Mr. DeBitch, front and center for the consent calendar, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. The consent calendar usually has several items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions is also approved and requires no further action. Tonight, we have one item on consent, and that is item eight. Consideration of the Approval of the First Reading of an Ordinance Amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D Fee Schedule Related to Planning and Zoning Fees and Schedule a Public Hearing and Second Reading for December 11th, 2018. And that concludes tonight's consent.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Next item on the agenda, item eight, is Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, the item for consideration is consideration of the Approval of a First Reading of an Ordinance Rezoning Properties on the North Side of 66th Street at Queen Avenue as a planned multifamily residential development in consideration for the Approval of the First Reading of a Transitory Ordinance Vacating Queen Avenue and a portion of Russell Avenue between 65th and a half and 66th Street, and to schedule a public hearing of the Second Reading for December 11th, 2018. So, the summary is Broadway Investors LLC, the developer, submitted an application for a planned unit development for a four-story, 179-unit apartment building on the North Side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenues, and this site's been designated for high-density housing for a number of years, all the way back to 1982 in our comprehensive plan. Of the seven properties that make up the development site, three are currently zoned high-density residential, or MR3, and four are zoned single-family residence. The proposed zoning change to the planned multifamily residential will allow for flexibility for administering specific requirements for the zoning code, in exchange for superior design and a project that meets the needs of our community. So, I guess I have a couple, a couple of thoughts about this. We certainly heard feedback on both sides of supporting development, supporting the increase in density in the city. As is often the case, the residents that are closest to the development have expressed the most concerns, and we've heard those in our public hearings. We've talked about those. They're not public hearings, but the open house that the developers had. We've had a chance to talk to residents, and one, even a third-grade classmate emailed me just a couple hours beforehand, and it's nice to reconnect with her, but she expressed some concerns about the, about the project. So, a couple of things that I would say, just generally about the project, is that there's always a tough balance. It has, this is something that's been planned for a lot of years in our comprehensive plan, and for residents that maybe aren't familiar, there's zoning, and then there's guidance. And this area has been zoned, correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but I believe much of this area has been zoned for multifamily development, and all of it has been guided, meaning that there's a long-term intention for there to be multifamily development. In terms of places where this could happen, this is right in between an apartment building and the backside of a thrift store and a convenience store. And so, even though there are houses, I think one of the houses, and the developers are here, they can correct me if I'm wrong, has not been abandoned, but has been not inhabited for quite some time, almost a generation. And, and so then we're talking about less than half a dozen of families who have voluntarily chosen to leave. There's no, and I think that there's a, there's a great degree of some misinformation. There's been no homes that have been taken in the process of this, and the city cannot do any kind of eminent domain in this, in this situation. But, this is part of our, not even, I say "our" as a city, but something that goes back all the way to 1982, part of the comprehensive plan and vision that our founding, if not founding parents, our parents and grandparents in the city have, have thought would be a good place for development. So, that, those are my comments. Any other colleagues, Mayor, have comments?
Yeah, I attended the Planning Commission meeting last night, and there were a number of residents that spoke. And I can empathize with them. They've been in the city as long as I have, have owned their homes for 30, 40, I think. The longest resident there was 58 years. And your neighborhood is your nest, you know, your house is in it, but you have particular feelings for your neighborhood. And the interesting thing about it is, and this is to not discredit any comments or anything said by the neighbors, but I remember not that long ago, having an open meeting in the streets over on Oak Grove, where people talked proudly of their neighborhood and how comfortable it was and how safe and secure. I was at a meeting over on 18th, when we were still working with Chamberlain, and the comments of the neighborhood were similar. I would never say exactly the same, because everybody talks about it with emotion, so they use different words. They're giving the same message. And the message is, is that Richfield has 37,000 people that live in somewhere upwards of however many neighborhoods, and I've never heard anybody say anything but glowing comments about the safety, the security, the camaraderie, the sense of safe, safe being. Your children go out and play in the parks, you don't have to walk them down there and walk them home. So, it's a testament to how Richfield was developed, and why we're a community of, I would expect this next census, probably closer to 40,000 than 38. Everyone feeling pride and being very protective of their neighborhoods, and I can understand that. The only thing I can say about it, and I know there's some people that, from that neighborhood in the audience tonight, it's jarring, it's distressing, it's disappointing, but if, you've been here long enough to know that things change around you, you don't always like it, but you learn how to accommodate it, if not really appreciate it. And if you go to some of the neighborhoods over the last five years that have been developed, where people were concerned about additional traffic, noise, disruption, lack of that, losing that sense of security, I don't think you're gonna hear anybody say that. And I'm not challenging you to go out and ask, but people that have been disrupted in their lives for a year or two while construction goes on, at the end of it, take a look back and said, "You know what? This wasn't such a bad idea." I'm not trying to convince you. I'm just, I'm just telling you, be patient, because we don't do things to step on your sense of security, the comfort in your home. What we're trying to do is allow more people to move into the city and enjoy the collaboration and the feeling of security we all have here. So, it's a disruption, but I think, long-term, you're gonna enjoy your new neighbors, and maybe they'll let you use the pool every once in a while. So, thank you.
I just have a question, and I watched a good portion of the Planning Commission meeting, but not every bit. And I would benefit from a bit of a review of the action taken. I think there were some amendments discussed, and just the action taken on the Planning Commission.
Yes, Councilmember Howard, Members of the Council. It was quite an extensive public hearing. There were a number of comments. They generally tended toward concerns about traffic, concerns about the height of the building, specifically on that north side, shadows that would be cast by that building. I think those are probably the three primary categories. In terms of how the Planning Commission voted, they decided, they proposed an amendment to the proposed plans and recessed for about 15 minutes to let the developer consider that. The proposed amendment asked for a reduction of the height on the north side of the, of the project, reducing that from four stories to three, and then, in exchange, allowing five feet on the 66th Street and east sides of the project adjacent to CVS and ARC.
Just to be clear, five, five stories, not five feet?
Sorry, five stories, yeah. Five stories, three on the north, five on the south. The developer recessed, came back, and said that they think that's feasible for them, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with that amendment.
Thank you. And I am wondering, I know this is just the first reading, but just for the benefit of the public, and I think for the Council too, just to hear from the developers and maybe just walk through the proposal, you know, just, I think that would be worthwhile. Again, just to be clear for the public, that this is only the first reading, but since we're talking about it here today, I think it'd be worthwhile just to kind of, you know, see on the screen what the proposal looks like, and just give you that opportunity to talk about the development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Todd Olent, I'm with Bogart and Peterson on behalf of the developers. And what we're proposing to do initially was a four-story building, had 179 units. Of those, we have a mix of studio, single bedroom, and two-bedroom. Single bedroom was a den. There's been a great deal of collaboration with the neighbors to the east, with the Frazier Building. In a result of that collaboration is, we're going to incorporate eight truly barrier-free units and market those as such. Additional units can be offered for barrier-free, converted, or fitted out, barrier-free.
Excuse me, when you say "barrier-free," does it mean accessible? Is that what you're talking about, or?
We're talking barrier-free. Zero barrier, if you will, as opposed to a converted unit where there's larger steps and tubs and just handlebars or handrails installed. This is truly converted, or truly fitted out for barrier-free
Thank you.
... living. Around the site, of course, we've got CVS to the north, we've got single, or, excuse me, to the east, single-family homes to the north, Frazier, and two additional single-family homes to the west. And across the street, there are some office buildings. And as you all know, 66th Street was recently reconstructed. So, we're excited about that particular, I guess, advantage, that the reconstruction just concluded. It's a brand-new street, new sidewalk. We're doing construction in such a way as we're not disturbing any of that. Utilities that were available, we're connecting into without disrupting any of that. We did have the recommendation, the proposal for a reduction in the height on the north and an increase in the height on the south side, or against 66th Street. We did convene, we discussed it. It is, in fact, feasible, so we came back and presented that as a feasible alternative. The, as part of the proposal, we are proposing to extend Russell, which is currently a cul-de-sac, down to 66th Street on the west side of the site. Again, collaborating with Frazier, they have agreed to dedicate a portion of their land, the easternmost 20 feet, for proposed right-of-way, and then the eastern side of that would be dedicated by developer. And that would be completed and designed with tree trees, a neighborhood feel, a framed street, if you will, so with sidewalk, and to give kind of an urban neighborhood feel throughout. Same is true on 66th Street, where we incorporated some community uses at street level, so it gives it more of a retail-y, inside-out feeling when you're walking along the street level, and then residents of that. We have done extensive landscaping plan to not only put the street trees and the street scaping in along all the frontage, but also interior landscaping. Unique part of the design is that we kind of did a central activity center in the courtyard, so when you enter the, enter the parking area that's in the center, that provides not only, it minimizes any impact to any adjacent of properties, but it also provides a community area where we have, we're gonna have sauna, or, excuse me, a hot tub, a pool, outdoor activities, possibly bocce ball-type things like that, but community activities. So, it's an active option for professionals to live, work, and play. And as you know, and as I've heard with all the hearings that we've been at, people not only want to be a part of this community, they want to stay in this community. So, it's another alternative for, another living So it's another alternative for, another living alternative for folks. Now, going back to how this all kinda started, was a market study, a dream, you know, and a lot of work and planning and everything, but the market study came back with market rate apartments being represented as 1% vacancy in the city currently, which is remarkably low. A healthy, or a standard, I guess, is around 4% or 5% for these types of units. So that really kinda started the ball rolling, there's a need here, there's people that want to be here, they want to stay in this community, and it provides another alternative. So if there's any particular questions, we're all here to answer them.
Yeah, could, could I ask a question about, something I'm just learning about the, the project now, and it, and maybe I missed it in another memo, but there are only one-bedroom and one-bedroom-plus-den units? Is that, is, are there, are there also two-bedroom?
There are also two-bedrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, a mix of all.
No, that, that's great, and I just, a resident expressed a concern, I thought is a point well-taken, that, you know, just the value that, that families and young families add to, to our, to our community, and if we, if we didn't at least have two-bedroom homes, we, I think we would get hardly any families with children, and, and we want to see that as a part of our development. So thank you, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Doesn't appear to be.
Okay. That being said, I would move we approve the first reading of an ordinance that amends the Richfield Zoning Code Appendix 1 to change the zoning designation of blocks 2 and 3, Harry Tickner's subdivision of Lot 15, Richfield Gardens from high-density residential, MR-3, and single-family residential R, to a planned multifamily residential, excuse me, not A, but to planned multifamily residential.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval is passed.
We, we have a second component, there's a, the, the, number two. Number two, we would, I would move the approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance vacating Queen Avenue and a portion of Russell Avenue between 65th and a half Street and 66th Street, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for December 11th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item passes also. Apologize for the loss of my train of thought, but with all due consideration, item number nine is mine, and is with a sincere feeling of bittersweetness that I move the appointment of Administrative Service Director Assistant City Manager Pam Demetranco to serve as interim city manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm gonna make this brief, just a couple of quick thank-yous. First of all, for, and I'm not gonna name people, because I'll forget people, and I, I don't want to do that, I don't want to offend anybody, but all the council members that I've had the opportunity to work with over the years, I thank you to all of them. Again, great people to work for. I'll go back to 2004, when I was the assistant city manager, and, and at that time, there was a council switch-over from 2004 to 2005, I think, and then Mayor Marty Kirsch, and Sue Sandall, and Susan Rosenberg transitioned from one year to the next, and they were, they had faith in me, put me in that, offered me the position, and, and I've always been thankful of that. And, and so I've always tried to, to repay their kindness by doing whatever I could to prove myself. In fact, if you remember, Marty, I started at a ridiculously low contract, even lower than the person working with the contract suggested I would. So, and I said, if you wanna, you know, bring me up to average sometime, I'll try to earn that.
If I may interrupt you just for a second, because, believe it or not, I actually watched part of that on TV, and I heard your testimony.
Yeah.
And, and I heard you say, "Offer me whatever you want to, because once I prove my worth, I'll get up to where I should be." So, so, so don't, don't paint yourself into a corner saying, "I, I, I..." I, I listened to you, Steve, but, but I will also say, that, that, and I've mentioned this a number of times, that's one of the things that, that stuck out in my mind before I'd ever even entertained the notion, is that's somebody I want, that's somebody that is not reaching for the stars until they earn it. And, and to me, that, that is a huge sign of integrity in, in a person, so, and that, that rode with me all the way up until I actually firstly met you in person after I got elected, so. So don't, I, I never discounted that, I thought that that was a sign of somebody that, that knew their worth, but didn't expect to be paid until they proved it to the other people. So, so that's really, that was really important to me.
Thank you. And the other thing I want to say, and this is to all the residents of Richfield, this community's been incredibly supportive and kind to me. You know, it, the life of a city manager can be a pretty rough life, seriously. City managers come and they go, and, you know, heck, within just the last couple weeks, there've been city managers who have been fired around the metropolitan area, it happens all the time. For, for a city manager to last a long time, it's, 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 it's more unusual, and, and, you know, for me, again, I thank this community for having the faith in me, and for just supporting me, and I couldn't ask for anything more. And then the other thing is, I could never have done what I did without the great staff that I have, and I'm always appreciative of that. People like City Attorney Mary Techen, and before her, Corinne Heine, who are just wonderful people to work with. And, again, I couldn't be more fortunate. It's one of those things that, it's kind of like, when your life turns out better than you ever, you know, ever imagined or expected it was going to, that's, that's what happened to my work life. It's like, that just doesn't happen to people very often. I think the statistic is something like 60% of people in their jobs don't want to be there, they don't want to work there, they don't want to be at that employment, and, and so I'm the anomaly, and, and here I sit, and that's just, that's just wonderful fortune, and part of it's just being at the right place at the right time. So, again, thank you, City of Richfield, it's been a great run, and this is a wonderful place, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Good luck, Godspeed, all those polite things, but really, as I think I said it before, stay Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.